Work session, let's begin.
Okay, Mr. [inaudible].
He's ready to go.
You have 10 minutes.
Hey.
And you've used five minutes of the month.
We'll stay on topic, we'll be fine. All right, so today, we wanted to just have a short discussion here with the Board of County Commissioners about the opportunity to change chip and seal materials. Haydite, which is a preferred material, it's very hard, it's porous, it's man-made, it's not a naturally occurring rock, goes through an oven, but it has always been very hard to get. There's a lot of contractors trying to get it, KDOT, MODOT, State of Nebraska, they all use it as maintenance items on their state routes. The salesperson over at the quarry recently retired. Since her retirement, I think she was locking in our, helping lock in our prices as the representative. It was bought out by HAMs prior to that. And so, since her retirement, our price has gone from $52 a yard to 70. We had discussed it with some local contractors. We got at least a couple of them to tell us what they were being told to see if it matched what we were being charged and what next year's prices would be. We were being told to expect $74 a yard this winter. Haydite's a very light material, and so, they sell it by the yard, they try to show that per yard price, either square yard price lower, I believe. It is approximately $110 a ton when you're looking at what that costs. We are currently hauling it from the quarry to Tongonoxie and stockpiling it because that's the only way we can get enough availability in order to have it during the chip and seal season. This is a 35 to 42 percent, depending if you're looking at the $70 or $74 price increase from 2023's maintenance costs to 2024. The approved budget had a 4.8 percent increase in commodities from 2023 to 2024. All of our commodities, oil, rock, and haydite have all gone up. Other than this, we had been seeing about a 12 percent average increase in cost for those commodities. So obviously, we're going to have a reduction of some of our maintenance, but in order to be able to offset that, we have the opportunity to use trap rock. Trap rock is a type of lava rock or igneous rock. It is not porous like haydite, it's very rough. It is what the city of Overland Park has switched to. It is what City of Topeka has used in some of their exterior roads and is what Shawnee County is now starting to use. It does come in on the train out of Missouri. It is mostly located in southeast Missouri, the stuff that is very hard. It is brought in by the train load, it's about 115 ton on a railcar from what I understand, and you have it hauled to your location, delivered, because they drop it off, I believe, in Edwardsville. This year, it has been costing between about $38 and $41 a ton to have that delivered to your site. So you're looking at a, not quite a third, but considerably less money, and that's not counting the cost of the county employees hauling it from the quarry to our location. This is having Pavlich or some other contractor who'd be a subcontractor of the rock quarry who'd be delivering it, bring it to Tongonoxie. This is a major change in procedure. There is some risk of unknown longevity. There aren't a lot of roads that have been out there more than five years that we could find. We did look at some that were four years old in Overland Park, and they were holding up very well. In fact, they looked really nice, but they don't have the same weight of snowplow, I don't believe. They're using a smaller snowplow when they're removing their snow material, but they would probably do it more often. The oil that is used has a higher polymer percentage. The current oil we're using has a 1.5 percent polymer. The new polymer is 3 percent polymer. That is a quicker drying polymer though, or quicker drying oil. It does cure out a little faster, which would be good if we had a pop-up storm come into the area, which we've had a couple times in the last few years, but it does set up at a quicker rate. You can apply it at a smaller rate, or a per gallon rate, per square yard, at a lower rate than what we're currently applying. We'll just have to experiment. We do have a new distributor that we, is pre-dialed in. We have another one, our secondary one is being replaced. Should have been here this year, but it's looking like it won't be here till October, November, so we'll use it next year. And we have a new chip spreader from a couple of years back now, I believe two or three years ago. But we can really, with all the computers on these, we can really dial in the application rate of the rock and the oil and find the one, I believe it is 15 pounds of trap rock per square yard. But with any change comes some inherent risk. Longevity that I've already talked to, talked about, quality. We are applying a new material on top of haydite. Haydite is porous material, so we're switching materials. And we're dealing with a new contractor, so we don't, we obviously have checked the references, but we aren't 100 percent sure on the reliability of these contractors. There are, I believe there's two or three that are currently shipping into the Kansas City area, one out of Arkansas and two out of Missouri, that we would probably need to solicit bids from here in the coming months in order to have it delivered by 2023. So there is some risk, and that's why we wanted to have a work session. Chip and seal maintenance, I know that it was discussed here in public comment, but it is very important to seal those roads to keep the water out of the base, to keep them from having potholes. When you drive across the road, it may not look great, but if you walk it, you'll see that there's cracks in that roadway that water gets into. And we, we are in this, I don't know, I haven't really discussed this too much up here, but we're in this small window between central Iowa and maybe Emporia, that is the, that kind of runs northeasterly, westerly, southeasterly, that is the, has the most occurrences of free stalls in the United States. So we have more free stall cycles in this band that's 100 miles wide than anywhere else in the United States, and that goes to the importance of your chip and seal maintenance cycles and sealing of the cracks. We are going to do a mile of this, and depending on the death, the death pump went out of, our sensor went out of the chipper yesterday, and it was being overnighted. We were going to do it today, but hopefully by today or tomorrow. We were at 187 in Dempsey, right there at the county shop. We were going to do one mile of this trap rock, just as a test area, going east of that, sorry, going west of that intersection. And so, we'd have an opportunity to look at it, see how it performs. Obviously, it's not, not 100 degrees out when we're applying it, but just so everybody can see the color, it's a little bit different of color, it has a little more of a reddish hue, depending on which quarry it comes out of. This stuff from Arkansas that we saw was a darker red than the other, but I thought that, personally thought the appearance was better than the granite. We went and looked at granite, just to see what it looked like in Overland Park, and it had a gray appearance. I thought it made the roadway look kind of dried out and older. The stuff I thought had a, as far as appearance goes, of the three to four-year-old applications, I thought it had a better visual appearance than granite.
So this is going to absorb oil like haydite then?
It will not absorb oil. It is, it is not porous, but it is still lava rock, so it is very textured. It is not smooth at all, it kind of still has that.
Limestone absorbs about 9 percent, haydite absorbs about 30 percent, so what's this going to absorb?
I think it absorbs well with the heavier polymer. I think it absorbs about 13 percent is what they were saying.
13 percent.
So it's not as much, it sticks better than, and it's not dirty.
So what's the application rate on the oil?
It is.
Like three tenths?
Yeah, I think.
Per gallon, per square yard?
Per square yard.
Okay, so if we're going to go over the top of haydite, you think that's going to be a problem? The old haydite's going to absorb some of that oil?
Well, we discussed that with Vance Brothers to see about how much of the oil would be absorbed, and they said you shouldn't have to apply any additional oil, because when you are applying oil to the haydite, to apply haydite to it, that existing haydite is absorbing the same amount of oil it would no matter the replacement material. And so, they, they thought that our application rate wouldn't be any higher putting this over haydite, because when you put haydite over haydite, you're still losing a certain percentage of your oil into the existing material that was there before. So they didn't think that would be an increased cost for us, but it's all.
Were there any concern on the, you know, your haydite tracked pretty bad this year when it got hot, so any concern on that?
Yeah, there's, I mean, obviously, there's always some concern on how much is tracking up. I think it's 3 eighths inch material.
It's 3 eighths?
It's 3 eighths inch material. The polymer's supposed to set up with 3 percent at a faster rate, so hopefully it doesn't bleed as much, it sets up faster, but I think it's something they're going to have to definitely watch, because it's not porous. So the room, your room for error without it being porous like haydite, in my opinion, is smaller. What Harbor was doing in Shawnee County was they were putting it down extremely heavy, the material was 18, instead of using the 15 pounds per square yard, they were using 18 pounds per square yard, but then they were brimming it straight into the back of the, they were back brimming it and putting it back into a dump truck and reusing that loose material that they would, that we would normally brim off the roadway.
Yeah, that's a concern too. If it's a hard rock and you've got loose gravel flying everywhere, probably get some windshield complaints. And then, do they have a quarter inch, like they use in the subdivisions, or it's all 3 eighths?
They have a quarter inch and they have a half inch. They have both, but we'd have to specify how much of it we wanted to use ahead of time, obviously, since it's in the railcar. I did not ask if we could do split loads, where they brought a certain percentage of 3 eighths.
Well, that'd free up some of the trucks, I know you tie up a lot of trucks hauling, especially without fuel permits in another state, so. Yeah, that's been a while. Probably should have had been.
Commissioners, really, this is, administratively, we can make this decision, we just wanted to bring it to you, so you would know if you start to see any differences in the process. But ultimately, I don't really think there's a decision here, because we can't afford to not maintain 35 to 40 percent of our roadway, which is basically what it comes out to be to try to balance the budget, you have to reduce that number. So Bill, I think, has been very creative in coming up with some alternatives here. It's used in the area, so we were able to see what it, what it is, but it doesn't have a history, so that's the challenge he's talking about. But I think, from the county's perspective, if we want to continue to maintain the miles of roads that we typically maintain, this is a solution that allows us to do it.
Yeah, that's a good summary of what we're here to discuss, is we can go, we can continue to use haydite, but under the current budget allowances for that oil, we're going to go from 110 miles to maybe 80, 85, and, or we can continue to do the same number of miles, but we're going to have some pain in changing, obviously, types of material. I think this is a much better material than limestone, and I wouldn't ever suggest going back to limestone.
Don't want to go back to limestone?
That is way dirtier. And I, of the two, I don't know the long-term performance, but comparing them side by side in Overland Park, this material had a much better visual appearance and seemed to really stick to the roadway, and two, the bleed-through seemed to have a lot less bleed-through than granite did. So more or less, it was the two options other than haydite that we really looked at was, is granite viable and is just trap rock viable? And of the two, I thought, from the county perspective, the trap rock was the better of the two products.
And no change in the size, the size is going to be?
Size would be the same, pretty much, but it's just way heavier. So when it does get kicked up, the likelihood of a chipped windshield is much higher, because the other one's a very light porous material, and this is a piece of non-porous igneous rock, it's heavy.
Natural rock versus man-made. So those should also wear a little bit.
Once you get it stuck down?
Yeah, if it sticks down, I will.
Or, like I said, the snowplow's a concern too.
I mean, to me, it's your decision, and it's an economic decision too.
Well, sooner or later, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fund the maintenance of these roads, because we're short.
And the bridges?
And the bridges, that's what I mean, road and bridges, so we can, I mean, it's not working. And I mean, if you've noticed, some of our roads, some of our blacktop roads are starting to get washboards, just like gravel roads, and that didn't happen. That only happened at intersections a lot of times, a busy intersection, but now we're getting them throughout the roads. Tongi Road's one of them.
Tongi Road, we just worked on Fairmount. We went down and tried to grind off, basically, almost like you're grading the road with Bobcat, you're using that big planer that we bought and trying to take off all the high spots of the road where it has washboarded just in the travelway.
Right.
And eventually, it will require mill and overays or some extensively big, i-ticket item constructions, like putting shoulders on Fairmount Road and just redoing the road like 158 Street before that gets corrected.
That's why it was on the 2006 sales tax, but it didn't get done.
And what, we adjusted the bill's budget downward in the budget process, approximately 1.2 million, is that, I'm trying to recall that exact number.
So Commissioner, we reduced the amount of increase in that budget, and I do believe it was a million dollars, give or take, but the board, the board had given direction that we wanted to just try to stay with that flat mill, and actually, we ended up even reducing the local service, which is also Bill's budget that goes towards this, to try to off, or we increased the local service, but we decreased his road and bridge even more to try to offset that increase. Yes, there was a decrease from what he asked. I think five years ago, maybe six, we did a presentation, Bill came in, did a presentation of what it really would cost to maintain our roads the way we should. Not to get caught up, but to maintain them the way we should. I think at that time, it was four and a half million dollars in, over and above what we were currently funding roads. We're working towards that. I think we've increased his budget about a million dollars a year, each year, something like that. But then you have these things where you look at the inflation on this. While we're increasing him a million dollars, our cost of doing business, 12 percent for oil, 35 to 40 percent for rock, that's 90 percent of his budget. So when you have a double-digit increase every year, and then you try to redo these flat mill levies, even not revenue neutral, but just a flat mill levy, we're losing ground.
Well, so we, I was thinking it was closer to 1.5 million that your budget.
Well, I can speak to it, because I've looked at it extensively over the last couple weeks, so. From the budget request, we met in a work session and we discussed bridges. So we, we asked for an increase in cost of bridges and equipment, because obviously, you know, the cost of equipment of like a dump truck, for instance, has gone up 100 percent, pretty much, maybe 75 percent.
If you can get one.
If you can get one. It's gone from $175,000 to $300,000. And so, from the initial request, it was based upon the work session discussion to put money towards bridges and equipment, of that 2.4 million, 1.2 million, 1.1 million about, I believe, was approved. But of that 1.1 million, about 850,000 of it was approved to go towards bridges and equipment, and about $363,000 of it was approved to go towards commodities, which was a 4.8 percent increase. And so, we did set aside about $600,000 for, $575,000, I believe it was, for bridges, in addition to what we had previously set aside, which is maybe half of a bridge a year. And then we set aside a few hundred thousand dollars for equipment, and, which would be about a one more dump truck, additional dump truck, and then we had $300,000 for commodities. So while it was 1.1 million, it really goes quickly when you're looking at a half a bridge, funding portions of a dump truck, and then commodities, where we're at 4.8 percent, but most of them went up about, salt, oil, gravel, haydite, all of them went up by more than 10 percent.
The reason I raise this issue is because Public Works, we made an adjustment on, but we have other departments of the county, which are large departments, which are not taking any kind of adjustment at all. And when we are looking at the, we're talking about roads, we have to look at what is sustainable long-term for the various departments of the county, and so as we start thinking about the next year's budget process, I think that's important to think about.
Well, road, we've got to start putting more money in roads. Somehow, some way, whether we use our sales tax money for big maintenance projects or something, like you said, if it's going to be an overlay, we're going to have to use sales tax money or something for that. I mean, I mean, I'm open to suggestions, but I'm telling you, we can't keep doing this.
At a flat mill levy, we cannot keep up with inflation in that department.
That's true.
And that is, we've shown that, we've demonstrated that, that's just the way it Deferred maintenance costs you more long-term.
That's, that's the thing.
You save the buck today, but it's going to cost you.
Get them the O-K and open them.
Exactly.
That's where we're at, and again, Bill did a great job in trying to go as far with the money that he's allocated, but ultimately, you go back to that five years ago, or whenever it was, when we came in and said we needed an additional 4.2 just to keep up, that's not to catch up, but to keep up. We still aren't at that level, and in the meantime, we've had double-digit inflation to, and on the vehicles, it's almost triple-digit inflation in the same timeframe. So, one, any opportunity for increased revenue that we can find, we go, we want to go after, that's grants and anything else. Two, long-term, that mill levy is likely to have to increase if you want to keep up. And it's unpopular, but it's the roads.
Or different parts of the budget are going to have to actually be put on the table.
We're talking right now about working with Bill, saying, good, we're glad that you have found a temporary solution to.
I hope it's a.
No, I meant, no, I meant of.
It's worth a try.
It's worth a try.
Trying, you know, a solution, not temporary, but I meant a solution, because long-term, we still have to figure out how we're going to pay for all of these.
Case we do have to go back to the haydite.
Right.
And also, are you going to have any haydite carryover?
Yeah, there's a little bit left at the Tongonoxie Quarry, so we'll keep it around, but it's getting, that pile, I was out there two weeks ago, and the pile is getting pretty small, so.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know as far as yardage, how much, I'd have to go have Delany pull the numbers, but there was still some a couple weeks ago, but they've done.
I don't have to do 50 miles an extra.
No, we're moving on though.
Oh, no, 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 maybe 10.
Hey Mark, how far are we, and I should probably know this, how, maybe it's not even a good question, how far are we gone through our county whitetails, sales tax, the 1 percent or whatever it was, we, we got that spent up to 20 years, or we got that spent up to 10 years? Because obviously, Doug's mentioned.
2017 is the first year of collection of the current sales tax.
What year?
2017 was the first year.
March, March of 2017.
I know we've done it a couple times.
However, the commission, previous commission, spent about 10 million right up front on projects before really the sales tax came in even. So we spent a portion to begin with, we've issued some bonds, those are being funded out of that sales tax, we issued bonds towards other projects, the big street projects that we did right off the echo. So it's, it's not been a pay-as-you-go. We've allocated 100 percent of what we think is going to come in on the life of that. That's the CIP that we bring.
How far, how far out are you though? I mean, is it, the bonds, is it like, are they 10-year bonds, or?
They, typically, they go to the end of the sales tax. So some of them were 20-year bonds when we originally issued them. I think the last one probably was like a 19-year or something like that, because we don't have, it doesn't actually go to 20 years.
Before I got on the board, they passed a resolution to spend, to bond up to 40 million dollars.
I remember that, Doug.
And I think we're at 30-something, low 30s.
I don't recall off the top of my head.
It was 40 million, I remember that, Doug.
But they also bonded money before they had a place for it, and we spent $765,000 for the interest, before they spent one dime of it, so.
We can't fix what happened in the past, so.
But we can sure make sure it doesn't happen in the future by reminding everybody of it.
And we need to be forward-looking, and we need to look at some of the.
Well, I'm trying to look forward, but it's just saying, we are in trouble on roads.
Well, absolutely.
Ms. Chairman.
But we're going to continue, as long as we continue to be unwilling to make really tough decisions, how's that?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Bill, I don't know if you're able to kind of, this is something positive. The number of grants that we have received, I don't know if you've collated the total of that in the last two years, of what we've gotten through the state of Kansas, through the various, the various grants, kind of reflect on that.
Sure I have, yeah.
Okay?
I bet you have.
I got a misfortune, if you want me to.
I would love, I mean, I know we've done really well, this is a softball.
If you might hear a reminder. No, it, we have gotten $2 million most recently. We got 1.2 million dollars for the leg of Tongonoxie Road north of Stranger Creek. We've got 1.7 million dollars for the leg south of Stranger Creek. We got 1.2 million dollars for Fairmount Road. We got 900,000 for County Route 30. We got 1.1 million for 158 Street. I can email these to you if you guys are writing them down.
I like that, because that shows something, I would like to see that, Bill.
And then we have, if you count, we, I presented and defended against the Johnson County communities, the 155th Street grant, Baser wrote, but we presented it, and made the motion and got everything lined up in the voting of that. That was 12 million dollars. They received 6 million dollars for, maybe it's eight, for their parallel road to 158 Street project over that next phase. They got 400,000 dollars for the trail that goes across from 155th to 158. We got the water fish passage grant on K-45, that was about 250,000 dollars, I believe. We got the local bridge grant for E-48, and so that was another 250,000 dollars. We had a fish passage grant from the EPA, that was another 75,000. We've got 250,000 dollars from KDOT on the regional study, and then all the cities chipped in on that. We got a sign project when I first started, I think it was like 150,000 to do the ones up on Santa Fe and Millwood. We had gotten the Safe Streets For All grant, that was 320,000 dollars.
You assisted Lansing with 1.3, I guess you're saying?
Lansing got 1.3.
Your congressionally.
We're doing an.
Congressionally-directed spending, if it comes through on the Omni bill, that'll be another 2 million that we would receive at the end of the year, if that, as long as they pass the Omni bill package. Through Senator Moran's office.
I mean, this is important information.
You're doing an incredible job, and I'm so happy I was on the team that helped hire you. But, and one thing, you know, I know it's not, it's, but I would also like to move forward with making the consideration of, this is a lot of the grants, transportation issues for the advisory committee that will come out of the, I would like to have you and to, an advisory board for how we move forward and the decisions we make in future prioritization of our plan for the.
The regional transportation.
Yes.
Regional transportation plan.
And I really would like to, to have a discussion in a meeting to discuss forming that committee and, you know, potentially just taking the existing members and moving them into an advisory board, keeping, just keeping the momentum of that going. That's just.
I think we should probably have a work session on that.
No, I said I would, that would be a like for me, so I'd like to have that in a work session.
And so, just so you guys are aware, we'll be going to two local consults, they've They've changed the KDOT local consult format-
Right.
-to that committee. And so I'm going to send out an invite here this week. I was changing that yesterday, but we're going to need to meet with that group again, so everybody's on the same page on, we're going, they no longer do presentations. Like, they used to do these piggyback presentations where maybe myself and a commissioner and a mayor and another public works director would give a 4-point, four-section presentation. But they don't do that. They don't want to listen to everybody's presentations. And so now you get up and, you get an opportunity to just say who you are, that you have some projects, and then you have a handout. And so what I have created is a business card with a QR code-
Right.
-and the information on it, so I can hand it out to all the KDOT folks, and they can just use their phone, scan the QR code, and get to our priorities for progress website. They've already evaluated the projects. I think they're still, they want us to, what I was told by KDOT was they want us to speak on, bring up the Eastern Gateway, K-5, and the interchanges on K-7, and the turnpike can be thrown out there, but it's a separate project down on 158 Street, because it's not KDOT. But that's what they're primarily looking at is, you know, K-5, Eastern Gateway, and two interchanges, one at Fairmount and one at Parallel, and a full interchange on our kid.
Okay. I just, I just would like to have a work session.
No, sorry, I was going through it, I said Parallel.
We can schedule the, we can schedule that work session. The thing to remember is that any of those projects that aren't currently part of our CIP would have to pull money away from our CIP.
Right, and I understand that. I mean, just so that we have-
The important thing for us is to focus on that CIP, and if you support these projects, they need to make it to our CIP somehow.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just, and that's correct, but I'm just saying, I think that we have a good advisory, or, you know, we had a good board to, to bring us to where we are with-
Don't let momentum stop, yeah.
Right now, don't let that momentum, I just think it's a good idea to try-
At least talk about it.
Just talk about it and discuss how that might impact, or what would be the pluses and the minuses of that. That's all I was asking for.
And where we can get additional funding for roads, just the maintenance.
Right, but, okay. Well, I don't think we have anything else. I think we kind of have, thank you, Bill, for finding a-
Thanks, Bill.
I get you, it might be tomorrow, because we have to be in St. Joe by noon, but I'll get you, I'll send it tomorrow.
No, that's fine. It's just kind of nice when we have a, when we know there's a problem, but you come with us with a solution for a problem.
Safe Edge Signage.
Safe Edge Signage, that was about $150,000.
There was two, two different ones?
Yeah, we had a-
And we had the local, it started before I was here, because they forced the county into it, I think. Everybody had to do it. But we also have the local road safety plan, that was about $150,000.
I just like having solutions when you have a problem, and you come with us with the solution is awesome. Thank you.
We'll see. All right, thanks. At least three brace windshield.
Okay, well, then I guess we are adjourned.